Has been since yesterday.
Deer Creek is up, okay.
All right, we need a motion to come out of executive session.
No move.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose nay. We are out of executive session. We'll rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Anyone wishing to speak must sign in in the back. Do we have anybody that signed in? Saying none, we'll move on to item five, which is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I would like to remove an item from the agenda. Before we, would I do that before we do the approval?
We should have a motion to approve and then you can make the amendment to remove it.
So move.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Brian seconded?
Yep.
Okay. Now you may make a motion to remove an item. Amendment?
And what I want to do is remove item 10B, like boy. D like dog, excuse me. From the agenda for today.
That's item D. Okay, motion. That's your motions. There are second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to amend the agenda to remove item D. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the amendment to remove item D. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose nay? Motion carries. The agenda now has that removed. Is there any other comments or amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose nay? Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Item six is the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve? I suppose I could read them real quick. We've got the approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, and approval of the human services report and all the documents thereof. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments on any of the consent agenda items? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Or excuse me, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Porzma? Krogman? Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I apologize, Jen. I didn't have time to circle all my roll calls. Item seven is a special recognition for Robert McGrath for retirement from the local emergency planning committee. Bob, I'm gonna have you come up front and I'll do this up there.
I want to say a few words after.
All right, you can say a few words after I make the presentation?
Yes, please.
All right. Robert McGrath has been a member of the local emergency planning committee, also known as the LEPC, for thirty years. He was the last remaining charter member of the original LEPC. Mr. McGrath is a retired Brookings City landfill director, also a graduate of Austin High School, my alma mater, a year or two ahead of me, and former chairperson of the South Dakota State Emergency Response Commission. For your service, Robert, we'll probably have to rely on you for a few more months here for your advice with what's in the news today. This is a certificate of appreciation. It's presented to Robert McGrath on this tenth day of March 2020 by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of thirty years of dedicated exceptional service on the local emergency planning committee. Signed by me. Robert, congratulations.
Thank you, Mark.
This is a second retirement for you almost, in many cases.
Yes.
I appreciate your service, and so does the community and the county. And you can make a comment before him if you'd like to. You go right ahead.
Well, I'd like to thank the commission for this honor. One thing is, there's a person that needs a lot of credit for the local emergency planning committee, and that is Mel Kloster. He was the first chairperson of the LEPC, and he did a wonderful job of bringing together business industry, particularly ag-related industry, into the LEPC. And that ag-related industries are still active today. So he's really the person that deserves credit. Unfortunately, he's passed away, so, but, thank you.
And I'd like to say, I started in 1999, working part-time for the emergency management office. And I was put in charge of doing the paperwork for the LEPC at the time, and Mr. McGrath and Mr. Kloster both was there. And when I become full-time, as the planning of director at the time, Mr. Kloster and Mr. McGrath, who was a Sydney employee at the time, they would always hold a break every morning over at the, at the local restaurant. And they started inviting me over, and that's how I, I learned the ins and outs of being zoning and was able to survive in the beginning. Because I was an outsider when I started. I absolutely knew no one, and no one knew me. But through my relationship with, with Mr. McGrath and, and Mr. Kloster, as he mentioned, they, I got my feet finally on the ground, and they, they helped make me what I am today. So I wanted to thank them personally. Thank you.
Both former Austin Packers. Except Bob, we both took different paths, but we both ended up in Brookings, so. I've always considered Austin a really good place to be from. We'll move on to our approval of claims under routine business. Is there a motion to approve?
Go move.
In a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. The claim's payable in the March cell phones. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Porzma? Aye. Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item B, we're gonna start with the finance office, Vicki, since you're next on the agenda there. We have a bit noted item, and your report.
Good morning. Yeah, you should have received in your packet the auditor's account from the treasurer with the treasurer. And this was from January that was not available at the last meeting. So it just shows you that we are in balance, and that just goes with what we had from last time. And also, was it attached, Stacy, the, I do have, you should have received in your packet. This just shows you what the, the first pair, or the first column there is the 2019 beginning balance of each department, and then the contingency transfers and the supplemental budget transfers. And then the fourth column was the total budget for nineteen. And then also, the very ending column shows what got rolled over to fund balance. And the first page there is all general fund. And then we have, second page is highway and bridge, emergency management, and all the other funds. So that just kind of gives you an idea from each department what went into fund balance. And the fire department trust, what is ever left in their budget, that goes into the long-term fire. And then I just reviewed the revenue budget that showed you through the different funds, how we budgeted, and we were over-budgeted on pretty much everything. But still, I, I just felt very fortunate that we were as close as we were. Like, the one percent over budget in general fund was 207,000. But that's still, I think that we were very close on everything for what we had budgeted. And Stacy's going to put this in her PowerPoint that she is giving you for the end-of-the-year annual report. So if you want to look at it and have any questions, be sure and give me, you know, let me know and we can go over it. But just to kind of give you an idea of what everybody had left in their budget and how everything played out at the end of the year. So, and otherwise, just business as usual in our office. Any questions at all?
Any questions for Vicki? Hearing none. Thank you very much for your report, Vicki.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to, Brian, you're next on the highway report.
Got a pretty lengthy report here, so if I'm moving too quickly, slow me down. Looking at our bill from Banner, you can see we had our four bridges that we're working on there. Two of those are our smaller structures that we still plan on doing this year, so that total is 20,219.50. Blackstrap, we got six loads of salt. Hopefully, we're done getting salt in this year. CHS, you can still see we got refills in each of those locations for a total of 17,675.18. And the DOT, the Big Sioux Rivers Bridge south on 77 was a couple of bills. And then the one south of Brookings here that we're gonna be looking at adding to the big program. And February 25th at 11:00, I, I opened the bids for annual supplies, materials, chip seal, and asphalt patching. Twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, our crew had IMSA training, so half the crew went one day, half the crew went the other day. And that's a minor safety and health administration training. February 27th, the county was granted 1.375 million for the Big Sioux River north of Bruce. This was awarded through a big grant, big improvement grant program. This bridge will be replaced. It's in its entirety, and I will keep you guys posted as that moves forward. And there's also a supporting document there that's been posted, the DOT website. And if you guys have any questions about that, that's at 50%.
Right, so we, so we need to come up with 1.3 also?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, have we put that in our budget yet?
That'll be for the coming years.
Next year, but that, is that when they look at that to be? Because are we, we're doing that, right? We have to handle it, correct?
No, that, that's handled through the state.
They are gonna do it. So when did they say they're gonna get started?
Well, that's what I'm waiting on. They just awarded it, so most likely it'll be let next fall, is what I'm guessing.
Depending on water levels and stuff like that?
No, it's all gonna be depending on their schedules and timelines.
Are they, I mean, obviously, we've had a couple delays on our other large projects throughout the state. You anticipate that they're gonna be backed up and we're gonna be?
At this point in time, I, I just don't see that.
Okay.
Yet. And I know the state's been lenient on their projects also, and, you know, that was announced last year also, that, you know, extensions were given. That's why you see the winter work happening on our bridges. That typically wouldn't happen. So I'll get to that later in my report, too, here.
I just want to ask Stacy a quick question on that. Will we do a budget line for that 1.3 million so that we've got that set in like we did on some of those other projects?
I think we can review all of that at budget time and, and look at what we need to do.
Okay, so, yeah.
Track it for them. Yeah, because this, yeah, yeah, we will. We will take a look and make sure we have it. It probably won't be until 2022 at the earliest, I would think, so.
Construction, so, I mean, we've got some time to make sure we get our, our numbers in a row. So following that, talking about some more big grant program bridges, talking with John Ritterhouse in regards to the bridges south on 77. On March, or on February 28th, the deck tour, deck pour took place on the south structure. So that, that bridge is completed, aside from some guardrail and other minor items, a little bit of grading. But they've removed all material or equipment from the flood-prone areas, and they will halt on any further construction until the waters recess from the spring floods. So that's where they're sitting at right now. But the north structure, they have all the piling removed from the old structure, except for, I believe it's the south two piers. So they're moving along on that, but like I said, they're staying out of the flood-prone areas until the waters recess on the river. And we're able to get out and start crack sealing with the nice weather here. Moving right along with that, trying to get ahead of our chip seal program. And March 16th, the load limits will go on. Our roads are, or everything is starting to thaw, so I announced that last week, got the information to Marty, and got the information to Michelle and them up here to post it on our website. And those will be posted until I decide to remove them. And when I decide to remove them, you guys will be made well aware of that. So as we move forward there, if you get calls and complaints, we're trying to protect our roads. So I'd like to take a few minutes here and review the costs of the chip seal program prior to making action on accepting the recommendation for bid for the 2020 Brookings County Chip Seal Project. Attached, I've included my five-year plan. And in that five-year plan, you can see that I estimated 21,500, $21,500 a mile for approximately forty miles of chip seal totaling 860,000. And below, I will be giving you the facts of what our labor and equipment totaled in 2019. I intentionally did not include the materials for this. I am strictly looking at the labor costs and equipment costs. And then finally, we will review the costs and, or review the estimations for each road of the cost of materials, labor, and equipment. So last year, we worked, as within previous years, we worked with Moody County. And Moody County invoiced Brookings County approximately 38,273.85. Our labor costs, according to our time cards, was 21,772 for the eight days that we worked in Brookings County. And our equipment costs approximately totaled 883,244. And our diesel that we used those days and our gas that we used those days totaled 153,307.25. So if you divide those costs by thirty, we're looking at 5110, $5110.24. So taking into consideration those, our wages from 2019, so in 2020, we need to add 3% to the labor costs. We charged Moody County 20,886.87 in 2019 for our labor and equipment, for our work done down in Moody County. This was not computed into the cost, but should be considered as it was not work done within our county limits. So I just wanted to make sure, I pointed that out to you guys also, that, that's not work that was done in Brookings County, but time taken away from our guys outside of the county. So the recommendation for award for the Brookings County Chip Seal Project will be top coat out of Yankton. And their bid came in at 184,941.72 for the entire project, which consists of 40.1 miles. So if you divide that figure divided by 40.1, we come up with 4,612.01 per mile. So approximately 651.54 estimated per mile savings to contract this work done. With the total savings to do that is 26,126.75 in 2020. Because I know there's been a lot of questions as far as why we would looking at rebidding this. Another thing that we need to take into consideration, we deferred some equipment purchases. Another thing that we need to take into consideration, we deferred some equipment purchases. One was a rubber roller in 2019 at 110,000. An oil distributor in 2019 at 160,000. A chuck chassis for the oil distributor, as we don't have a chassis to put under that. So I, I guess I just bid a new chassis at 131,806. And one of the future needs that we'd be looking at having to purchase if we were to continue our chip seal program is a chip spreader. And totaling all them up, we're right around 715,000. That we'd be having to look at equipment purchases. So with the savings estimated there, I, I just don't foresee the need for us to keep doing that as we have a lot of work that we could be performing.
Moody County, I mean, they're?
They aren't doing chip seal this year.
And, and they have no one chances to replace their chip spreader.
And that was communicated also. They have no intention in purchasing the equipment, so that would lay it on us. So.
I had a question.
I know there was a lot of questions, so feel free to, or I'll be, be ready to answer.
You know, Brian, when we talked about this at, I think, budget time?
Yep.
You know, and, and I think this is a great plan myself. But I think one of the things that you said when, when we discussed it is that other work that y'all could be doing if you weren't doing the chip sealing. I, I'm trying to remember, what are we doing for the small structures then?
We've started doing our own work on those, Leanne. We did the two last year, the one south to Sinai and the one west to Bruce. We performed all that work and there was a cost savings there also, but we have the equipment to do that work. We didn't have to go out and purchase the equipment to do that work. One of the things that we've been lacking on and that I've seen since I've come up here is we need to start hauling gravel. Last year, all the gravel that we hauled was just to repair our roads to get them to where they were safely passable again. We had a lot of soft spots last year. And we started pulling some shoulders, and I know I, I took you guys on that, on the tour. We pulled some shoulders and there, there's a cost savings there too, because we don't have to haul that gravel. It's there, we just have to retrieve it out of the ditch. And I know it's a little bit of a mess at the time, but boy, that road is holding up awfully well.
So are you seeing this year, we'll do two small structures again, or do you have something else in mind?
Yep, and you can, or talked about that earlier in my report with the two small structures Banner's working on. They're near completion on design. We need to get, so the, the exception of the four tear bid that we'll have later on in the meeting here, we'll be ordering off that bid to get those culverts, or those box culverts coming.
So when we were at, oh, I think everybody was there, I can't remember, at the township meeting and talking about the statute that says which township, small structures, county is responsible for. Have you had any feedback? Are you expecting that we're going to be replacing any of those bigger culverts in the townships or?
Well, that's, I haven't gotten any feedback yet, but we are going to be putting together a mailer with all the information to get out to them. And I guess another thing I wanted to point out too, speaking of work that we haven't gotten done, we're looking at, we need to shoulder some of our roads too. And we started last year, but we got hung up with the snow. And that all takes time.
I think brought that up when we talked about the seal coat before. When you're seal coating, it's a prime time that you can be doing some of these structures and the waterways are, or dry, not dry hopefully, or during the summertime on it, the work needs to be done.
Right, because we lost out on approximately six weeks last year where we were chip sealing and it was, and not raining, where we could have been working on our, our culverts ourself. We have a few culverts out there that we haven't gotten done yet. But we did get quite a few done last year, but I would like to have seen more.
Hey, Brian, I'm going to pause you for a moment. You can stay right where you're at. We have a scheduled agenda item at 9:00 AM for supplemental budget, public hearings. That's an action to approve resolution number 20-07, a supplemental budget resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments on the supplemental budget resolution or any explanation that's necessary? I'll have a good do that. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address this issue? Anyone from the public? Saying none, I'll close the public hearing. And we have a motion to approve already. And a second, is there any comments or questions? Hang on, I believe we have to call the roll.
Krogman?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Pierce?
Hi.
Borzma?
Hi.
Bartley?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Before I get back to you, we're going to do the 9:05 one, a discussion and possible action to approve a request from Isaac Wilde, Wilde Air Service LLC to land an airport on county roads. This one is not a public hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any report on this one?
We didn't have any requests last year from, from Isaac. And I wasn't aware of hearing about, from anybody that he did land on our roads. But there again, like I mentioned last year, I know we're sitting in a little better position. I don't want to say that too loud. But if we do start getting our spring rains, I, I again would encourage this as it will keep some of the mud off of our roads. I know we're going to experience some of that again, but I think this helped a lot last year, even though he didn't use it as far as getting the, the crops or, or the fields sprayed that the, the mud was just not on our roads as it had been in the past. We had a little bit of problem in the fall, but not bad.
I see Isaac in the back of the room? Would you like to come forward and make any comments?
I'd just like to say too, the application is in front of you or it was in your packet. We had put some stipulations on that application last year about that Isaac would contact various departments to let them know when and if this would happen. And, you know, he's willing to leave that, those there as part of the application process again.
Yeah, like you said, we didn't use it in your guys' county. It seemed like most of our work could be done on the airport where we prefer it to be. I have had some guys reach out to me in that southwestern region of the county where we might look at using it this spring or towards midsummer. So it is nice to have an option for it. I figured out last year, I think, in other counties, we did about 700 operations off the road, so takeoff and landings. So we just, like I said, it was, all of our work around here was just so centralized around Brookings where it made more sense just to do it off the airport, but.
In any other counties, did you have any problems or?
Uh, we did have an issue up in Duell County. I'm sure everybody heard about that, where we had an airplane hit the sign. But there was a number of factors that caused that. But many other counties, we had no issue at all, I guess.
Any other questions, Isaac? Thank you. Any comments, Marty? I know there's always a coordination with your office.
Because I talked to the sheriff in Duell County and there was an issue with, you didn't have, you didn't have people at the ends to?
We had people at the ends. I think maybe there might have been some miscommunication there.
That's important because I, I'm low on staff and I can't come and?
Right.
Direct traffic for you, so.
No, and we won't.
Part of the deal is that you have people on the ends.
Yeah, and it's state law that we've got to have flaggers on each end, so, and signs up, you know. I don't know if it's out in there, but if you refer to the codified law, it'll tell you all the requirements.
Okay, any other comments or questions from anyone? Now we'll call the roll.
Johnson?
Hi.
Pierce?
Hi.
Borzma?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Bartley?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Brian, you're back on top.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Isaac.
Was there any other questions before I move on comparing last year's costs with this year's anticipated costs? Okay, so I'm just going to strictly look at this year's costs. One of the things that I, I guess I did not add into our bid packet was our fog seal. So that being said, I budgeted 860,000. The contract with the materials will be 746,584.30. So that leaves 113,415.70. County performs the fog seal ourselves. That material will cost 106,779.80, leaving us under budget by 666 bucks, 666, well, 663.590. Can't spit that all out, sorry. But anyways, that we'd be performing our fog seal ourselves. And that is an operation that I, I like to get a rain on the road and wash the rocks off. We had that south of Olga this year, held up really well.
And we have the equipment for the fog seal?
Yes, we don't have to run, go out and purchase any equipment to do that work. And that would tie in a lot nicer. I know some of our roads sat quite a while with our 80/20 split with the state. I think this would sit a little nicer as far as getting the state in there to, to get our striping done a little quicker.
When they come into seal coat, what's their estimated time? Will they do that in probably one week?
Four days. Last year, it took us eight.
Yeah.
So it's a lot quicker process. You know, I did talk with the contractor on that. Their estimated force when they come into a county is 27. With, combined with Moody County, we had 23. So. But that's providing flagging in their, in their operation. Like I mentioned to you, I know, Leanne, you asked if these guys were going to be bonded. They are on the pre-approved list with the state. They do state work. So they are licensed and bonded.
Didn't they do higher 14?
I think that was, that was another contractor.
Different one, but same style?
Yep, same style. The contractor that I'm looking to award the contract as the city of Brookings. And unbeknownst to me, I guess they're opening up their bids on the same day that I have bid mine out, so.
So they have the same.
But you, you have the materials stockpiled?
We're working on that. Yep, we're working on that. We're going to have a stockpile by Bruce. We're going to work since the bridge north of Bruce is posted. I worked with Hamlin County. We're going to stockpile up by Esteline and then over by White.
And then the oil, they'll order it off our bid then?
Yes, they'll order the oil off of our bid.
Anything else?
Other than, I know it's a little farther down the agenda as far as the pickup went. I did go out and reach out to Brookings Auto Mall and I got the information from the state as far as what the pickup would cost us. I guess if you guys wanted to look at those figures there, we're about $1,400, 14, 18 difference. Purchasing it locally compared to, to going out to pier to get it. So I, I guess I would suggest purchasing it locally.
Okay, we'll deal with that when we get to that part of the agenda then.
That is this part of the agenda. It's not on for action. It's in his budget. I think he's just looking for direction from the board on whether or not to purchase that locally or not.
Okay, it's not on the bid?
It isn't. No, no.
And if we look at my five-year plan, I had 45,000 budgeted, so it is well below budget.
I don't have a problem with purchasing it locally.
It's nice that they'll work with you in, in town here to do that.
No, really, really easy. We, I just managed to get in there when they were coming in with some new dealer incentives too, so might have saved us a little too.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question if I could.
You bet.
We had our first drainage ad hoc committee meeting. And one of the things that was discussed at that meeting, and, and I'd like to know the answer to this, is we're looking at the drainage ways in the county. And a comment was made by somebody that maybe our, our program for keeping our culverts cleaned out wasn't as effective as it should be. Could you just tell us what, how we handle that on the county culverts to make sure that they're cleaned out and, and ready to go? And if somebody sees a problem for the listening public, do they contact you about that or?
Yeah, we make a list, is what we do. And we try to tackle those problems there again in the, in the drier times of the year. We can't do them all at once. I know there's culverts out there that have some restrictions, but they're not constituted as plugged.
They're not what?
Constituted as plugged. If they got some sediment in them. If you look at how the state designs a culvert now, they design them to have that sediment in them. So I mean, somebody may look at that and say, all right, well, that's got a bunch of dirt in it. It's still flowing, you know, it's still got capacity. It's not restricting the flow because in a major event, it's going to push it all out. But the ones that are physically plugged, plugged. I, I know the areas that some speak of, they're flat. Those areas are flat and most of the time our, our culverts may be flowing, but the land beyond that culvert is where the restriction's at.
So what's our process? We've got a lot of culverts.
We've got a lot of culverts.
Okay, so is there some process that your department follows for inspecting those? Or you wait for somebody calling a complaint? Or how do we make sure that we're not contributing to the problem with the flow of drainage in, in Brookings County?
Well, one of the things that I've started to have my foreman do is, is to go out specifically on our chip seal roads or our, you know, roads that we're going to do pavement on, those are our priority. We inspect each culvert on that road. So if we have to do any work to that, we want to get it done before we do the process. Secondary, we fall down to, we're checking out all of our culverts at least once yearly.
Thank you.
I was driving by and just looked to the left of me and I saw a culvert going under the, this was a state highway though, but there was water backed up, but it seemed the fence was full of stuff. And everything was basically, it was on the private land. How, how do you, I mean, do you, do we ever reach out to the landowners and say, hey?
We have, and in cases where that's happened or we see an obstruction maybe coming.
Yeah.
We have.
Because it was kind of all stuck right at the fence there and it was blocked up. And everything was spreading out into their fields, so I'm sure they want to get it moved too. But it wasn't making it to the culvert, into the right of way even, where we would probably have responsibility for it.
Right.
Do you have an inventory on our culverts, the county's culverts?
I'm working on getting it and put in GIS.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? Saying none, thank you, Brian. We'll move on to Sheriff Marty.
Brian, thank you for your work on the big grant.
Yep.
Appreciate that. Nice work again. That's another million and three coming to the county. Appreciate all the work on that. You did a good job.
Yep.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll try to be brief. You guys got a big day. Anyway, just, just to start out, we had the township annual meeting last Thursday. That, quite a few individuals there. And Larry had to sit through my, my, my speech at the end, which I thanked everybody for two years of taxpayer money paying for our jail. So hopefully, I can get them fired up. Anyway, some of the things we talked about at that was, was roads and, and how to, every year, you know, calling in to make sure that dispatch knows that, what roads are being closed in the townships and so forth. And also gave them an email address that if they don't feel comfortable calling, at least they can email it in to dispatch too. And so we're anticipating that. We're going to be a little more, my office is going to be a little more aggressive on going around barricades. We're going to do the best we can going around barricades and getting stuck in the middle of a road that they shouldn't be on. And going to work with the state's attorney about if there's something else we can charge on minimum maintenance roads if they. if they go down and get stuck, if it's overdriving road conditions or something like that. But I wanna make sure that, that uh, state's attorney is willing to, to go with that if, so we'll be visiting at some point the dam. Um, the other thing is, is that in the detention center, at the present time, we have forty-one inmates. I'm overloaded on females. You know, I have a, uh, only one cell for females, which, which by square footage I own, it should hold eight in there, but there's ten in there. Then I have another cell that we uh, uh, got four in. So I'm a little crowded on the female end. Uh, I have one inmate that we did take to uh Falk County uh due to the fact of his charges and uh, and not able to put him, he was, he's charged with a sex crime and was not able to put him into another um cell block afraid of, uh, for safety concerns. Uh, one of the things, I brought jail administrator Swayby in too, in case you have any other questions that you would talk, wanna, wanna talk about. But uh, we're gonna try to see how I can reduce jail population. I, I have seven on work release right now and that's a lot compared to in the past for that. And they're out twelve hours a day and I got them on GPS already because uh, just for the fact is that before GPS, someone's out on work release and if they don't work at the same location, they gotta call in all the time and tell me where they're going. So it's easier just to put them on GPS and I, then we can track them where they're at and so forth. So, you know, I have seven individuals that are on GPS. They're already out for twelve hours. So to me, they're not a threat to society. So Bart's gonna work with the judges to see if there's a chance that we can just put them on house arrest after they're done with their twelve hours and, and we can track them with GPS, you know. So we're gonna try to work with that. That brings seven down that I would be able to, to uh, uh, help with the jail population. The other thing is, is that with the virus, Edno Commissioner Pierce um asked me about it the other day. And uh, you know, what were we doing at the jail and, and so forth? And, and so what I did was, is, is I had Bart call the other jails around us to see what they're doing. Now, no, nobody's panicking yet on that, so it's kinda business as usual. But I don't wanna overkill and, but I don't wanna underkill. In other words, I wanna be ready in case something does happen. It's not any, it's not any different really uh, right now as it was when we, in the flu season. If somebody gets the flu upstairs or in a cell block, everybody gets the flu. But we're gonna be ready in case something does, you know, if it gets, gets, gets to the point that we'll have a plan to reduce probably coming and going at the jail. You know, right now, every day, I have a hundred and fifty, I have forty people that come in twice a day to blow in the tox sliders. They blow on my correctional officer every time they come in, you know. So uh, it's business as usual, you know, what can I do? I have, uh, I have uh, peace, education and attorneys coming in and, and this and that. You know, I guess if we get into a, a problem, I will reduce or restrict people from coming into the jail. Only the bad guys, you know, that we have to arrest. You know, visitation only between the glass, uh, just to try to reduce bringing something into the jail, you know. I'm not gonna keep it from, out of there if it gets to that point, but maybe I can reduce some of that, that, that coming in. So, you know, we are gonna, like I say, we're not gonna panic, but we wanna be ready and, and be prepared. I have two part-time nurses that, that, that are, are helping us screen when people come in and, and, and uh, so we're, we're just trying to do the best we can with the limited space that I got, so anyway. Uh, right now, we do have a hundred and fifty-four people on the twenty-four-seven program. I have three on drug patches. I have forty on PBT, so there's eighty of them that come in. I have twenty-two on SCRAM, come in once a week. I have seventy-three on UAs that come in twice a week. And I have fifteen on GPS. So that's kinda where we're sitting with that right now. Now, the other thing that I handed out is that, that I'm really not gonna talk about this too much here, but I, just to, just to, uh, just to kinda let you know what we're doing. We're tentatively set up to start screening the first Monday in April, so that's the sixth. So I just gave you a diagram of what we're kinda planning and also the signage. And uh, it'd be about two hundred and forty dollars to put the signage up and so forth. And, and probably next commission meeting, I will talk more in detail about what we plan to do. But I just kinda wanna get you, if you have any questions, now either time to hit me up on, on your concerns, unless you have any concerns right now, but.
Any questions for Marty? Thank you for your report. Jacob, we'll do legalization next.
Nothing new to report this morning, thank you.
Thank you. Bev, do you have a report?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to um update you a little bit on the electric and the, and the new system. Um, and thank you for the approval of the, of this unexpected expense in my office. But um, the disposal and the installation went really smooth. The um, the installers that came from Mid-America uh were very efficient. They were very polite and they cleaned up after themselves. Um, I apologize to the other offices for the noise and I, I appreciate their tolerance because there were power tools um being used to um saw through a, a steel beam that went through the electric that, no kidding, was like this. And um, and then they had to attach the runners for the new system to the cement, into the cement of the, of the floor. Um, but it, I think it's going to work out really well. We've got it all um filled up again, so I, I know now where things are again. For about almost six months, we had it all over the back room and on tables and on the floor. And so it's nice to be halfway organized again. As for the office, um, business as usual, things are picking up with the um upcoming spring coming. And so we're seeing more documents to reflect that too. And I invite you to come see the new system too.
Well, thank you. Any questions for Bev? Thank you, Bev. Mr. Hill?
Good morning. The local emergency planning committee meeting was held on February twentieth. Meeting went well. Unfortunately, since I had to go to the LEPC, I missed the census meeting, which that day was held, but there, they did not have a form, so basically it just talked about the census. I'll get to that here at the end of my report. February twenty-nine to March third, I did fly into Washington DC to attend the NACO Board of Directors meeting. I took annual vacation for all functions. It, I attended the, while I was there, because I'm a, I'm on the board for the National Association of County Planners. But since I was there, I did some county business. I attended the Rural Action Caucus, the NACO High Performance Leadership Development Academy Networking Session, the recessions on the twenty-twenty census, the COVID-nineteen outbreak and other emergency management related topics. And the guest speakers ranged from General Colom Powell, HUD Secretary, Center for Disease Control, Dr. Robert Redfield and President Donald Trump. While I was gone on March second, Richard went up to the City of White and did our emergency management briefing for them. We also dropped off a bundle of a thousand sandbags, which is our policy. March third, there was a joint jurisdiction area planning meeting held. We did not hold our regular pla- regular scheduled planning commission meeting because we didn't have anything on our agenda. At the joint meeting, they uh had some discussions on the wellhead protection area again. And it looks like they're gonna start moving away from that topic now to probably the, some of the small acreage discussions. And I, I don't know what to give you an update on that up. Commissioner Bartley is on it, maybe he'll give an update later on it. But uh, I can tell you the, the Brookings County Planning Commission is not very happy with the way they, the discussions are going on the wellhead protection area. We haven't made a vote on it yet, so we'll, we'll let it sit at that. But uh, there are some concerns about um people's rights and things like that. And, and we feel that, once it gets to the public hearing stage and, and the public attends, that will, it'll, it'll bring out some, some interesting discussions. That's the way, is the way it's being phrased to me by some of my, my planning board members. Also on March third, there was a flood conference call put on by the state of South Dakota. Richard and Ray Lynn listened to the conference call down in the office. With this slow melt that we're having, obviously most of the snow has gone from this area, thank goodness. We still have some snow up to the north of us. And uh, Six Mile Creek went into flood status two nights ago, Sunday night. I sent the information over to Marty Hendricks, the City of Brookings Street Department for uh, his information in case they had to do any evacuation, but they, they didn't. It just, it was a spike overnight and then now it's back down. It's, it's right at getting to the close to be flood stage. We had a call two nights ago, uh, four sixty-fourth Avenue, I believe it was. And, and Volga Township is closed because of water between two twelfth and two thirteenth street. So the big sewer, it, it's full. And any melting at all is gonna, gonna bump it up. It's right on that near flood stage area and which means in a two-hour period, it can go into flood stage. In an eight-hour period, it can go to major flood stage. It's gonna start knocking out the township roads left and right. And um, it is what it is. We, there's, there's not much you can do on this type of riverine flooding. We know it comes dearly. The townships are as prepared as they can be. Our county highway department, they're prepared when they go out every morning. When the water's high, they know which areas to look at and we'll tap into it the best we can. Uh, March fifth, I attended the towns and township meeting. I gave them the emergency management discussion. We discussed how to keep records and what records to keep and, and there was discussions on road closure signs. They had their insurance. Agent was there talking to them about how to post roads and things like that. And uh, that was good. Last night I went to the City of Elkton, gave their emergency manager briefing. And on March eleventh, I got a two-one-one conference call set up. We're gonna discuss volunteers. Up until now, it's rare that we use volunteers to fill sandbags and stuff like that, but two-one-one, they wanna set up a system where if we do have the need, we can, we can do it rather quickly. And while we're there on sandbags, we do have sand. Thank you to the highway department down at the S-curves to the south. And then up on South Dakota thirty, at the county, at the county sand area, we've got sand up. We've, we have given out some sandbags already from the office. All people have to do is stop by the office and we can sign out sandbags. If it gets to a situation where we need to set up a sand filling, sandbag filling station, we do have um trailers set up with several thousand sandbags and shovels and we can hook that to any truck, take it down, set it up, open the doors and individuals can come in and, and fill sandbags. I can, I can tell you, I won't be able to fill too many sandbags, but I'll, I'll be able to give them the materials to allow them to, to do it. March eleventh, we also have, which is tomorrow, I believe, also have an ad hoc drainage committee meeting that starts at three PM. When we, when we set up the drainage committee, ad hoc drainage committee, it was requested by the drainage board that we give you a, a statement of wire read there. And I passed out the, the draft minutes and if I wanna bring it to your attention. Now, I just had them highlighted and lost them. The, the paragraph where it says Chair Harley opened. And uh, right now, as of now, and it's, it's a living document, but our, our mission statement for the ad hoc drainage committee is as follows. Study the drainage system to include natural and man-made features in Brookings County and make recommendations to the Brookings County Drainage Board as to how the drainage system might be improved by February first, two thousand twenty-one. Any, any comments that you want me to take back? I realize you just heard, heard it, but uh, if you have any comments, like I say, we are meeting tomorrow at three PM. You're welcome to email me any comments or relay them anyhow you'd like. Tomorrow, we got an interesting, I didn't, the agenda's on the agenda board on, on the internet, so the public can look at it and you're welcome to look at it too. But we're actually gonna have a GIS that's, that's, we're gonna pull up the GIS mapping that, that Mr. Sampson has the ability to use and does a good job at it. And we're gonna, gonna take a look at the countywide. We're gonna look at the various watersheds, figure, hopefully determine which ones we wanna take a good look at and then we wanna start our inventory and of the list of culverts and bridges that we've got in the townships and counties. And that's the goal for the, for that one tomorrow. March twelfth, Thursday, we've got a PPCC and a slash pod meeting at the hospital. The, the coronavirus, it's, it's in the United States. It's running rampant. We will get it in South Dakota. We have no cases in South Dakota right now. We will get it in South Dakota. We will get it in Brookings County and we will get it in every small town in Brookings County. I was in Washington DC. I listened to this Center for Disease Control. I listened to several different doctors talk about it. And they're encouraging it, no one panics. Just because it's coronavirus doesn't, it's no different than the common cold, uh, flu. A little worse than the common cold, but it's no worse than the regular flu. We lose, you know, thousands of people every year to the, to the flu. If you're elderly, if you're considered a senior citizen, if you've got underlying things like diabetes and high blood pressure and all that, yes, you're more vulnerable than an eighteen-year-old high school student that can run eighteen miles in, in so many minutes. But we just have to be careful. Wash your hands. You know, I'm not gonna sit there and say, don't, don't touch your face. The, the big rampant thing on social media now is some woman from some medical department saying, and do not touch her face. Then she licks her finger and turns the page to read the second page. I'm not gonna, you know, I, we don't know it all. I can tell you, we've had a pandemic planning plan in Brookings County since two thousand and five, I wanna say. Mr. McGrath was here earlier. We, we, he's dedicated his life, him and a, a nurse named Jan Klyte, Department of Health official now, but she used to be a head nurse over at the hospital, I believe. They wrote the plan back in two thousand and five. It's been continuously updated since then. And it is on our county be ready Brookings dot com website. And uh, we are literally as ready as we possibly can. We don't wanna panic anybody. We're, we're as prepared as we can be. We're gonna continue life day to day like, like we always are. The jail's gonna function as a jail and the library's gonna function as a library and, and everything. But if you do cough, coughing to your sleeve, like they recommend to prevent colds and flus. If you don't wanna shake hands, that's fine. You can do the elbow bump. You can kick each other in the shins if you want. I don't care how you wanna say hi, you know, whatever. There's, there's various ways to say hi and fist bump and you name it, you can do it. But uh, they are recommending that you don't, you know, just, just treat it as a common, as, as, as a common cold season and, and you don't have to stay away from people, but if you're coughing, coughing to, I got a handkerchief out here in case I gotta cough. Coughing to your sleeve and just, just uh, go to be ready Brookings dot com. You can read up what we've got and uh, we, we just don't need to panic. All right, let me move on. I've got a home and security grant meeting next Wednesday, I believe it is, in Mitchell, South Dakota. And on March twenty-third, I've got a emergency manager briefing to third grade students. There's three classes of third grade students. We're gonna go over and teach them about tornadoes and shelters and things like that. And the last thing I wanna talk about beside, before I get to your questions is, I passed out this document. You're gonna get it to some, some mail, a letter in the mail. And it's gonna have a, it's gonna be from the United States Census Bureau. And it's gonna say to the residence of, and it's gonna give you your street address. And then it's gonna have some numbers in the upper right-hand corner. It says, it's gonna be a user ID, a ten-digit number. All you have to do is get to a computer, and it can be any computer that you want. I did, I got to this webpage for my computer down in the office. You can go to any computer that you want, log in with those 10 digits that's on that mail that you get, answer the questions that they ask, turn the computer off, and you're done. The United States Census Bureau will not knock on your door, and they won't bother you anymore. If you decide to throw that letter away, or burn it, or shred it, or whatever else you do with your mail, you'll be visited by a United States Census Bureau employee, probably a contract employee, but still, they'll have the official identification from the United States Census Bureau. So, I encourage everyone to go out and vote. They're highly confidential. They, if your house is dirty, they're not gonna tell your neighbors that your house is messy if they do happen to come into your house. But why even bring them there? Just do the thing online and get it over with. If you have problems, anyone's welcome to come down to my zoning office, and we'll be more than happy to help them figure out how to get it done. And if you don't wanna come to the zoning office, you can go over to the library. Anyone, any place that's got public computers. The main thing, Brookings County and the county commission wants you to be counted because the more people that, I mean, we want an accurate count. Don't get me wrong. We don't want you to get in there lying and saying we got more people than we got. But we want an accurate count so we can get an accurate amount of money that we're due from the federal government when they issue out money. Any questions?
Any questions for Bob? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. At this time, we're gonna move into some regular business. We've got a lot of it, so.
We have a one be it noted item, though, first.
You got the be it noted item. Where is that at? Be it noted, volunteers with the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center are to be listed in the minutes for work comp purposes, and there is a document for that. Is a be it noted item. Thank you. Regular business. Item 10. Item A is an action to approve resolution number 20-08, a plat of Lot 11A in Cedar Point addition, and Government Lot 3 of the northwest quarter of Section 28, Township 109 North, Range 50 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota, is our motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments on this resolution? Any comments?
Just, it's just straightening up a line. They had a, they had an odd line going off on the original plat, and they asked if they could straighten it out, and we agreed to it, and the planning board approved it, and sent it to this board with the recommendation of approval.
Thank you. Any other comments? We'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Worsma?
Aye.
Crookman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is an action to approve resolution number 20-09, a plat of lots 1A and 2A of Goodfellow addition in the north, one half of the northeast, one quarter of Section 18, Township 111 North, Range 51 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments?
This is a legal split of the place known as the Owl up Oakwood State, up near Lake Oakwood. And it's a legal split. They got 35 acres on the large parcel, and it was approved by our planning commission, sent to this board with your recommendation, with their recommendation that you approve.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll call the roll.
Worsma?
Aye.
Crookman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item C is an action to approve resolution number 20-10, a resolution authorizing the purchase of concrete pipe based on the price established through the Cottington County South Dakota bid process. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Any comments, Brian?
I did put it on my bid packet, but they did not bid, so that's why we're buying off of.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Crookman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Worsma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is an action to approve agreement number 20-14, an American Institute of Architects agreement, with, that's, excuse me, has been removed from the agenda. Item E is an action to approve agreement number 20-04, a memorandum of understanding between the city of Brookings and Brookings County regarding the participation and the cost and authorization of construction of an interstate interchange at 20th Street South on Interstate 29. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item F is an action to approve agreement number 20-05, an agreement between Brookings County and Bose Construction for the 2020 Brookings County servicing project. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Any comments? Brian?
This is just the final signed agreement between the two parties.
All right. Any other additional comments?
Was one of Brian and these next items, are they within what you budgeted, budgeted them on?
The asphalt's a little over, but our budget should be able to absorb it.
Any other comments or questions?
I just had a question. Last year, we had a little bit of a dispute regarding timeliness of when, I can't remember exactly what was gonna happen. Do we have that fixed in this contract?
Yes, I added milestones into this, and then these documents are EJ CDC. And it was, this was, came upon recommendation of the state's attorney.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item G is approval of the highway bids. I guess we're gonna do each one. It's a motion to approve each one. Comments and voice votes on each one, so we'll start with. Item I is an action to award the bid for three-quarter inch crust gravel to low bid on all items listed from Sturzinger Construction, Elkton, South Dakota, and Nitterberg Construction, Esteline, South Dakota, is our motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments?
The reason we decided to, to explore out to Nitterberg Construction is that we're gonna be doing that bridge north of Bruce. And while that area is, is cut off, we'd like to have a little gravel on the north side of that area. And if you recall from me mentioning my chip seal project, is we got a, our chip seal areas, same, around that same area as the Nitterberg Construction is.
Any other comments or questions?
What, I guess I didn't see the bid tab. What's the cost?
660. Let me pull up my bid tab here. We'll be looking at the actual figures also, but Sturzinger was 660, and the Nitterberg was 650.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item 2 is an action to award the bid for HR-class asphalt to the low bid on all items listed from Bose Construction, Brookings, South Dakota, is our motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments?
This is just the asphalt that we use to patch our culverts that we pick up ourselves.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item 3 is an action to award the bid for natural cover aggregate to low bid on all items listed from Johnson Brothers Madison, South Dakota, and Concrete Materials Course in South Dakota, is our motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments?
The Johnson Brothers are gonna be working on putting us up a pile, so in the meantime, we need to get our chip rocks hauled, so we're gonna haul from concrete materials.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item 4 is an action to award the bid for road oil to low bid on all items listed from Flint Hills Resources LP, Marshall, Minnesota, and Gebero Inc., Sioux City, Iowa, is our motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments?
Like I made a comment last year, when I attended the asphalt conference, one of the problems that now with the new regulations imposed onto the truckers that they got so many hours they can work within a week. So if we get late in the week, we might have to buy it from a different supplier to keep the contractor going.
Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item 5 is an action to award the bid for asphalt patching to low bid on all items listed from Bose Construction, Brookings, South Dakota, is our motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Any comments?
We put this out for bid this year, as now we're moving forward with a lot of these culvert projects. We go and we patch it in with our motor grader. And then we'd like to have Bose come in and come over the top of that, smooth those areas up.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item 6 is an action to award the bid for equipment rentals to low bid on all items listed from Prusman Contract in Brookings, South Dakota, Titan Rentals Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Bose Construction, Brookings, South Dakota, and Rounds Construction, Inc. of Brookings, South Dakota, is our motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions or comments?
One of the reasons that I reached out for this is say we would have an emergency, and I would have to look to, look for help, say, in a major event. At least we have the prices in line if that comes up.
Any other clusters or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item 7 is an action to award the bid for the 2020 chip ceiling miles of Brookings County roads to Top Coat, Inc. of Yankton, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments?
One of the things that I'd like to bring up, and I know that we haven't looked at the bid tab for this yet, but I had three contractors within $1,300 of each other for this project, so we, we had some very competitive bids.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Approval of bid documents or bid agreements, and each of these will have to be separate also. Item 1 is an action to approve agreement number 20-06, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Sturzinger Construction of Elkton, South Dakota for three-quarter crushed gravel. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item 2 is an action to approve agreement number 20-07, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Nitterberg Construction of Esteline, South Dakota for three-quarter crushed gravel. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item 3 is an action to approve agreement number 20-08, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Bose Construction of Brookings, South Dakota for HR-class asphalt. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item 4 is an action to approve agreement number 20-09, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Johnson Brothers Rutland, South Dakota, for a natural cover aggregate. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item 5 is an action to approve agreement number 20-10, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Concrete Materials Course in South Dakota for a natural cover aggregate. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries. Action to approve agreement number 20-11, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Flint Hills of Marshall, Minnesota for road oil. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Item 7 is an action to approve agreement number 20-12, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Gebero, Ick, Sioux City, Iowa for road oil. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve, oppose nay. Motion carries. Item 8, action to approve agreement number 20-13, a purchase agreement between Brookings County and Bose Construction, Inc. of Brookings, South Dakota for asphalt patches, patching. Any motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. All right, move on to action I, an action to approve abatement number 20-01, an abatement request made by Ricky and Andrea Lemke for parcel number 31275-00300-00300, and the amount of $52.37. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion in second. Any comments on this? Jacob, any comments?
Yeah, the first three abatements that you have here on the agenda are all due to individual property owners who suffered flood damage on September 12th of 2019 within the city of Aurora. They've been approved by the city council of Aurora and recommend approval by me.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll call the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Worsma?
Aye.
Crookman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item J is an action to approve abatement number 20-02, an abatement made by Blake A. Larson for parcel number 31225-00000-01800, and the amount of $69.66, and hopefully I got all the zeros in there, so motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. I know we've already had comments. Any other comments? If not, call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Worsma?
Aye.
Crookman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item K is an action to approve abatement number 20-03, an abatement request made by John R. Pike for parcel number 31226-00000-02100, and the amount of $61.26. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Worsma?
Aye.
Crookman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item L is an action to approve abatement number 20-04, an abatement request made by Brookings Municipal Utilities/City of Brookings for parcel number 40245-00100-00400, and the amount of $1,413.17. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments?
This is a residential property here in Brookings on 4th Street by the Silver Water Tower that was torn down. They acquired the property on June 4th of 2019, so the amount of abatement is for their ownership through the end of the year.
Any other comments or questions? Call the roll.
Crookman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Worsma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item M is an action to approve the abatement number 20-06, an abatement request made by Valley Communications, Inc. for parcel number three six five two five dash zero zero three zero zero dash zero zero five dash zero zero and the amount of one thousand one hundred seven dollars and eighty-two cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments?
Uh, we were made aware by Valley Communications over in Volga and confirmed this through Department of Revenue that they pay tax on their, um, office building over in Volga on grocery receipts through Department of Revenue, so we can't collect property tax on that. The abatement is for the amount that we tax them for the full year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Jacob, is this something new, or is this a new building for them or a new situation, or why, why now all of a sudden this year?
Yep, they acquired the property last year and they started construction on the building, so it was actually partially complete for twenty nineteen's assessment for taxes due in twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye. Item M is an action to approve abatement number two zero dash zero seven, an abatement request made by Adam H. and Stephanie M. Buchholz for parcel number three one zero five zero dash zero one four zero zero dash zero zero one dash zero zero and the amount of sixty-six dollars and twenty cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments?
It's another flooded basement over in Aurora.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item O is an action to approve abatement number two zero dash zero eight, an abatement request made, made by Carrie R. Stevens for parcel number three one two two six dash zero 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 dash zero one zero dash zero zero and the amount of fi- uh, fifty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments?
Same as the last one.
Any other comments? If not, we'll call the roll.
Forsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item P is an action to approve abatement number two zero dash one two, an abatement request made by S. H. Investments, LLC for parcel number three six five five zero dash zero zero one zero zero dash zero zero four dash zero zero and the amount of four hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments?
This is a property on the north side of Highway fourteen in Volga. The house was actually moved to Lake County on October thirty-first of twenty nineteen, so the amount of abatement is for the taxes on that house through the end of the year.
Alright, any other comments or questions? If not, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item Q is an action to approve abatement number two zero dash two four, an abatement request made by Danny Al Skordall for parcel number one two one four zero dash one zero nine five zero dash three three, three dash one zero and the amount of two hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Comments?
This is a, uh, primary residence on the south side of Lake Campbell that suffered significant damage in that same timeframe as the Aurora flooding, September twelfth of twenty nineteen, uh, through the end of the year.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Matt will call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye. Item M is an action to approve abatement number two zero dash two five, an abatement request for a property tax exemption for parcel number three two one five zero dash zero two eight zero zero dash zero zero four dash zero zero and the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments?
This was a late elderly tax freeze and, um, they have been on the program a number of years and actually this, um, person is ninety years old and the, uh, application was filled out by her son. And the second abatement after this is also a late elderly tax freeze.
Alright, thank you. Any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item S is an action to approve abatement number two zero two six, an abatement request for a property tax exemption, exemption for parcel number one nine nine eight zero dash one 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 four eight dash two zero two dash zero zero and the amount of five hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-six cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Forsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item T is an action to approve an automatic supplement in the sheriff's office for reimbursement from the courthouse security grant to general ledger one oh one dash four dash two twelve dash forty-two sixty-eight, receipt number zero zero four nine six three four four and the amount of two thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and ninety-three cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments? Questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item U is an action to approve a request to fill vacancy for temporary election workers in the finance office. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? This is pretty standard. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. Item V is an action to approve a request to fill vacancy for an HR specialist in the commission department. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded. Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? Motion passes. Item eleven is commission department director's report.
Do you want me to proceed or is this a very good place to stop and do our executive session that starts at ten?
If, if your report's longer than two minutes, yes, it's a good place to stop.
Potentially.
Alright, uh, Lynn, are you taking a motion to enter into executive session? And I gotta go back for the number here. We got through quite a few pages of stuff.
It is in accordance with South Dakota Code of Law one dash twenty-five dash two one personnel.
Thank you. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor going to executive session. We will take a two to three minute break for this. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? We are going to executive session.
motion made and seconded all favorably, aye.
Aye.
opposed, nay, we are out of the executive session. I'll get to go back to commission director's report. We'll give her time to sit down. I see our state's attorney has left. I don't know if he's coming back or not. I'll give you time. He is back.
Okay. My turn. Um, equalization boards are scheduled for Tuesday, April fourteenth. This is not a commission meeting date, so I would need to know what time you would like to start that meeting. Typically, what we have done in the past is when it is part of a regular commission meeting, um, we reconvene at one o'clock in the afternoon as the Board of Equalization and then do boards in the afternoon.
Stacy, we already agreed to start at eight thirty on that day.
We did?
Uh huh. I have it in my calendar.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I didn't recall that conversation.
Uh huh, we moved it from April seventh to the fourteenth previously at eight thirty.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, Ryan preferred afternoon, but he said if everybody else said the morning, then he would just go with it. So we'll start at eight thirty on the fourteenth, and that's just equalization then that day. Well, it all depends on how many appeals we get. We really don't have any idea. Typically, I, in the past handful of years, it hasn't been more than a few hours. I mean, I would assume that we would be done by noon, you know, but.
Yeah, we only have, only have a couple of appeals on the docket as of right now, but the deadline is, we haven't reached the deadline yet, so that could, that number could jump up. But I would set aside two hours max right now.
So eight thirty to ten thirty.
The next thing is, um, the city of Volga, and I'm, um, Brian left unfortunately, so I can't get his opinion on this. But we've been, as you know, we've had some discussions with the city of Volga on the Samara Avenue project. This is on their priority list. I, I believe they want to start, um, uh, want to do this project next year in 2021. So budgeting for that is going to be, you know, starting to take place here shortly. Um, Jamison Barret is the city administrator, and he reached out to me last week, and I said that I would just bring it up as part of my staff report. That, uh, you know, we met, our commissioners Bartley and Jensen met with several of the city representatives, um, in late January. I think it was mentioned then that, um, the county maintain ownership of that road and be a part of, you know, the upgrades to the road itself. And then the city would be responsible for contributing costs to, um, curb, gutter, sewer, sidewalks, any of those types of upgrades a- along that route that they would like to see. Uh, I think what they're looking for from the county is, um, kind of the extent of that project. If we're going to do upgrades, you know, they had a very specific, it was like four or five block area that they were interested in doing that project. I think they're wondering if the county's scope would go from city limits to Highway fourteen. Um, so they're looking for some direction so they can start planning on their end. And, um, I, I know that they met, the highway, um, department met with Banner and the city folks. And I know at that point, I think the highway department had some concerns about the initial drawings and with some drainage concerns with that, but, um, I think the city feels like we can still keep moving forward. They understand they're not gonna, they, they're not gonna do a project that's gonna cause purposely draw, cause drainage issues. They just want to keep moving forward on this, and I think they're looking for some more information and some direction from the county, so.
The thing is that from my perspective, I had thought the city of Volga was going to be interested in, in having ownership of that, that, um, road. If they're not and they're asking us to do upgrades before I would have any idea, I need to know what those are and what it's gonna cost. What upgrades are they talking about?
Go ahead.
I talked to Brian briefly this morning, but, uh, his discussion on the, of the actual grade, if they're gonna lower it or not. Um, they had a meeting, I think they've had one, possibly two, discussing with the banners on what specifically they want to get done. Uh, they need to finalize that before we make a decision. I mean, that's, part of the design needs to be done.
So really Stacy can go back and talk to them and say, if you have a proposal, come tell us what that is and how much it's gonna cost.
One of the issues is we made that conversation that day with, uh, the principals involved over there is, we made the suggestion, we don't want to give up ownership of the road, and I don't really think they would wanna take it perpetuity. But the problem was, is it didn't go from city limits to Highway fourteen, so we'd have an abandoned part of the road that wasn't uh, in our control, and we left the pile, dropped the plow, plow and go across the railroad track. So our proposal to them was, is if we keep ownership, we'll participate only in the road reconstruction. But we were also interested in going all the way to Highway fourteen with our improvements. In other words, if they're gonna take sidewalks to a certain part by the park, could you go your sidewalk participation to Highway fourteen? So there's a lot of businesses and things on the other side of fourteen that we're concerned about as far as the community development is concerned and them additionally. So if we take it all the way there as far as road improvements to the city limits to fourteen, would they then be involved with sidewalk participation further than just the park, the additional, uh, footage to the north? Initially, it was, they had a concern that the cost would be too much, but it kind of fell on, there was a drainage issue right away. They needed to figure out how they were gonna solve that issue first, uh, and then what would our cost estimates be for us to do that? The original estimate to them was if we took it over, what would you give us, uh, in deferred maintenance over a lifetime of the road? Which really is difficult to figure out too.
So what my question is, and I know that this was before you came on the board, before Commissioner Borisma came on the board. Um, but when we did our tour years ago and talked about all this, I think it was the consensus at that time in the commission that we would like them to take over that section of the road. And, and if we have changed our minds on that, I would like us to have, at least have had a conversation because I thought that was the direction that, that, um, we were going, and then they could do what they wanted with it. You know, as long as we had those provisions in place that, I can't remember if it was Brian or Dan that talked about where we're going to, um, protect for drive-through traffic for, for trucking so that it doesn't impact the egg producers. But this is different than what I recall us discussing in the past.
The original issue was they're not going all the way to Highway fourteen. They're gonna take a section of the road and say it's ours, and, and then it's a problem with maintaining that county highway and, and jurisdiction is an issue. And if I were the city of Volga, I wouldn't want to take that over perpetuity anyway. It cost them a fortune down the road over the years. But at this point in time, if we maintain control all the way, makes more sense. It's just what's gonna cost us to do what they want us to do with the road. If most of the expense to the city of Volga is the sidewalks, sewer, water, lighting, electrical that they have to, to, to replace to get what they want, I don't know how much wider they were talking about, one lane maybe, wider? And they would probably participate in the cost of that. Obviously, if you dig that road up, it's gotta be resurfaced. We would do the resurface and it would be our expense.
Do we have any other county roads in Brookings County that go through municipality where we pay for that kind of stuff?
Pay for which?
Adding another lane, doing all of this.
We take care of the driving lane.
Right.
Uh, the other parts of the city takes care of it. Um, I believe, I wish Brian was here. He's, he's got ideas on that, uh, uh, the roadway surface. Volga has concerns with, they got a water issue. They need to install storm sewer to get rid of the water, and they have a safety issue with the sidewalks. There's a possibility of keeping the profile of the road and installing your storm sewer and also adding onto the side and getting your sidewalks installed. Uh, I think that was an option they, they wanted to sit down with banners and look at. I don't know if they've had a chance to meet again on that option, so.
Yeah, our, our indication is we want to work with them, but which is the best proposal for us?
Right.
I threw out the one that hadn't been considered of us maintaining ownership of the road for consistency. Cause I think in the other communities, we own the right of way through those communities too.
Not all of them. We don't own them through Brookings.
Which one?
And Volga's our second largest municipality.
What do we not own through Brookings? Or do we own? Or do we own?
State Highway 14.
The state highways, it's still owned by the state.
That's state.
The state, yes.
But again, I, I'm just saying, I didn't know that a decision had been made one way or the other on that issue and.
We talked about it not as a decision as much as it's a secondary option to what they proposed and what, what would you bring back to us? Now they're saying, well, what do you want to do? Well, give us those options back. I mean, it's not for us to go out and hire Banner to design this road. It's their decision, so.
Well, that's, that's a decision in itself. If we're gonna maintain this road, it's not saying we're hiring Banner. Banner is their people right now.
Right.
It has.
We're asked for proposals both ways. What works best for them, what works best for us.
I go back to saying that maybe this needs to be a future agenda item, and the city of Volga needs to come back and say, this is what we'd like you guys to do, and this is what it would cost, and then we can say yea or nay.
Yeah, but we won't know the cost until the length, because they only wanted to do, was it three blocks, four blocks?
Yeah.
Or if we're gonna do it within the county's best interest, I think you need to do it from 14 to the city limits to maintain that stretch of road.
In any case, I think it's in our best interest to have that conversation as a scheduled agenda item when we're all here and the folks from Volga can be here and Banner and associates can be here to have that conversation.
I can schedule, I can visit with Jamison and see what we can do on an upcoming, one of the next couple of agendas, see what I, what's available.
If you'd like Banner here, then they need to get that resolved.
And Brian.
Yep.
So you would like Banner to be here?
That was your suggestion.
I mean, I think if that question is out there, it's important to have the professionals who are gonna help make a recommendation at the table so they can help make a recommendation. Otherwise, it's just gonna delay the inevitable.
Okay, I will schedule them for a future agenda. I don't know if it'll be the next one. I'll see what availability we have, so. And then I put in my staff report, made a mistake when I was paying Preston Township for the culvert program last year and ended up only giving them about half of what was actually approved. I did go back through the minutes and double check, and yes, I, I somehow mucked it up. So we're gonna make it right. And I think in visiting with Brian, we're gonna take that out of the highway budget. He said he can absorb that amount about, it was about 50, 600, I think, because they had two different projects, and I essentially paid them for only one of the two projects. So, so that that maintains our $100,000, keeps that intact for 2020. And you've heard Brian talking about that. He and I need to get together, we're gonna update, he's been working on updating that letter to send out to the townships. And if you were at the township meeting, he discussed going to the townships who want to make an application, meeting them at the site, determining if the, the project that they want to make an application forfits the criteria first before they bother to even apply. It's gonna save them time and you folks' time as well, maybe not Brian's time, but it does probably save some, some legwork. So he and I are gonna work through that. If, if you guys are comfortable with kind of keeping the program essentially the same as what we did last year with some tweaks, we'll probably show you that letter too before we get it, we send it out to get your, your thumbs up, thumbs down on it, so. And then the last, other than the, the dates coming up, as Bob had mentioned, with the coronavirus, we don't want to go into panic mode just yet, but many organizations are making plans and preparing for maybe worst case scenario. And I know we have policies in place on closing offices for inclement weather, you know, what would the county, you know, look, what would it look like if the county needed to due to recommendations that come down probably from the state? You know, what would, what would the county, what would that look like with, with closing county offices? What obviously would be considered essential services to me, the jail obviously isn't gonna close down. You can't, you can't let everybody out. And then if you're saying to close county departments, would that be administrative leave? Would you require staff to use sicker vacation leave? In my thoughts on that, if you're, if, if you're getting a mandate that you need to close down public, the public offices, I don't think you can require or should require employees to use leave because if they're required to do that, they're gonna show up because there are going to be those employees who don't either A, have it, or B, want to use it. They're still gonna be coming in to work, which kind of defeats the purpose of keeping everybody kind of off the streets and home and not encouraging the public to come out if we have, if we're open. So I guess I'm, just as kind of preventive policy, what, I guess there's some discussion on what that might look like.
When do you have your next department heads meeting?
Not until April. It's a little ways away yet.
If it's a state pandemic mandate, I would say that's administrative.
I don't, I don't think they'll, they'll mandate. I think it would be a recommendation, but yeah. The, the thing that is, would be important to me, it's kind of like when we talk about holidays, excuse me for using that comparison. I'm fine with us saying that if we make a decision to close county offices because of the pandemic, that it would be administrative leave. I'm okay with that. What I don't want to do is say that if the governor is shutting down state offices and that, that we have to shut down and use administrative leave. I, I want us to make the decision as opposed to the state.
And I don't see, I don't see that being an issue with everything. We don't follow now what the state does. That is no longer our policy on anything.
Exactly.
So I think that that would come from this board. I mean, I think the chair along with, with, you know, consensus from the board, it would have to be, it would probably come very quickly so we would at least have an idea of what we would do and then kind of what that process looks like and, you know, who makes that. I think the chair makes the ultimate decision on that, but with obviously conversation with the rest of the board and myself and getting the word out. I mean, we did have the incident about a year ago where we did close county offices when the blizzard came through in the middle of April, and that came about fairly quickly. And we were able to get the word out and, and whatnot fairly quickly. So I think we have a good, good means to, to do that if we do decide to close. But I don't think it would be an issue being, it would be a county decision, not a state decision.
Would it be possible for you Stacy to reach out to the department heads and just say, if there was a recommendation for closing? I don't, I don't anticipate that that's gonna happen in Brookings County, by the way.
I don't know, yeah, we don't know.
And I want people listening to know that we don't think that's gonna happen. It's our job to plan, but, but we don't think that's gonna happen. But could their department be shut down? If not, what contingency plan should their department have? Or how would they want to handle it for their department? That's, that's what I'd like to know from the department heads.
And there may be sometime, it depends on, you know, I mean, and I don't know if we want to, there's a million different scenarios that would go along with that. I mean, if it were, happened to be a shutdown during a, a time of a scheduled commission meeting, we would, I would say we would postpone that commission meeting and reschedule it for, and conduct a special meeting so we can make sure that we get the bills paid as soon as, as soon as safely possible. You know, if it's in the middle of a payroll cycle, you know, maybe that person stays to get, make sure that that's accomplished. I don't know, we'd have to look at, at, at that, just the timing of it. I think there's some more things that may go in with that, but I think that can all be handled because this would maybe be something that would be a little more long-term than a blizzard, for instance. I mean, it could be several days versus a day with bad weather, so just have to kind of keep that in mind too. But, but if you're all comfortable with, you know, ultimately, it would be the commission's decision. The chair would make the ultimate call, and it would be administrative leave. I think we can go, we can go from there. Okay. The only other thing, I know I have several of you signed up to go to the Sioux Valley Commissioners Association meeting. That's next Wednesday, the 18th at noon, and that's up at Cottington County at their Extension Center located on the west edge of town. We have the Chamber Annual Celebration on the 19th. We do have all of you along with, they're not here, I can look up and they're not here. Sheriff Marty and Bart Siewie, jail administrator, Siewie are going to be touring the Minnehaha County Jail on Friday, March 20th. I will have the county vehicle here, here at this building, so you could meet here just before 8:00. And those wanting to take that can, if you want to travel, do your own travel, that's fine.
Just in the morning.
It's just, yes, I think the plan was to be back by noon.
And what time are we meeting here, did you say?
8:00 a.m., yep. And then as it gets closer, I do have in directions and instructions on where to go, where to park, where to meet. So I'll get that out, sent out as it gets a little bit closer. And then storm spotter training coming up on Tuesday, March 24th. That's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
The county gets two tickets for the chamber meeting?
I, yeah, and nobody really got back to me on how you want to do that.
I'd like one of the tickets if nobody else wants them.
I know Ryan was gonna look to see if his business had already purchased some, you know, some, I don't know, but.
We don't meet again before then, so how are we gonna handle that?
Do we buy a table for?
We get two tickets with our membership.
All right, do we buy a table for the rest of it?
We haven't done that in the past, but we could. And what Kelsey said is, I think, no, it wasn't Kelsey, it was whoever's working with it, said that if we bought a table, they would take $100 off the cost of the table because we had those two free tickets coming.
I was gonna say, I think. I think a table sits, fits six.
I think six.
It's, it's the 19th, next Thursday, a week from. You can't, I know, yeah, you can't go. You would go if there was a table. For sure. I think Ryan.
I would go if there's a table.
I would reach out to Ryan, LeAnn would, okay. LeAnn, Mike, Angie, Dan, and then I'll check with Ryan too. I'll verify that we, we have a couple extra spots, if, one extra if Ryan isn't able to. So I will, I will reserve that and then I'll try to let everybody know that that's what's going on and decide from there.
That'll have to come out of the commission budget.
Yes, that would come out of the commission budget.
All right. Anything else? Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the state's attorney's office report. Came all the way back here for that, okay.
Well, I have two questions for Dan, I'm sorry, Mike.
You have some questions.
Could you just give a, a really short, because you, you'll have a better handle on it than I would, J D A I.
Sure.
Okay.
So the unified judicial system, which is the court administration, has approached the county as well, as well as other local stakeholders to propose a grant-funded position that would allow the state's attorney's office to defer juveniles to a program that would be run through the Boys and Girls Club. And this would be a more enhanced diversion program that would be more appropriate for higher level offenses. And so we have teen court right now, but teen court is just aimed at class two misdemeanor type charges. This grant-funded position would allow the county to hire a diversion program coordinator that would office out of the Boys and Girls Club. And then the state's attorney's office would refer nonviolent felonies as well as other class one misdemeanors. Instead of going through the judicial process, we would go through the diversion program process. The curriculum for the diversion program would be similar to what Cottington County, Davison County, Minnehaha County, Brown County, and Pennington County currently have in place. Those counties have already received this grant. It would be a three-year grant for $60,000. The $60,000 would be per year for those three years. You have to reapply every three years, and then on the fourth year, they ask that all of those stakeholders put together framework to make that position permanent and sustaining. And so they've asked the county to chip in on that as well as possibly the city as well because these would be juveniles that would obviously be in city, out of rural part of the county as well that would be eligible for this. They've also framed it as a, rather than having some of the juveniles detained at J D C, they would have this coordinator monitor juveniles outside of detention. But some of the concerns that I've expressed is that we don't have juveniles right now that are being detained, that don't need to be detained or that out of custody placement is appropriate. The juveniles that we've had detained just in the last year and a half since I've been here, wouldn't be eligible for this type of, of diversion program or out of custody type placement. And so I think the, the diversion program would be more appropriate rather than the alternative placement program, just because I don't think we have the numbers or, I also don't think that we have juveniles that are being detained that shouldn't necessarily be in there. But it would be a cost savings for the county. It would be less cases in the court system, so I think that's where we would see the cost savings. I think the concerns expressed at our most recent meetings as of yesterday has kind of been what happens after these three years? What happens after the grant has been exhausted? Is there something that we can put in place after that third year to make it self-sustaining? So the grant will be submitted in April, the end of April, and then we'll know July 1st whether or not that funding is, is coming down, and then that person will be hired. I think probably LeAnn and I will sit on that hiring committee that will bring in this person, and then, you know, we'll start referring cases soon after. So that's kind of a rough summary of it, so.
And, and just a couple of things, the agreement that Dan's co-chairing, he didn't say that, he's co-chairing that committee. And when that, there will be an agreement brought to the commission that we would join together with these other entities, which include the UJS and, and a whole truckload of people, including Boys and Girls Club. And the agreement is for three years. The grant you have to reapply for every year. And the intent is, is that that grant would pay for this diversion program for that first three years, that we would get the grant and pay for it. At the end of the three years, we would have to evaluate because nobody else is probably gonna put money into having a juvenile diversion program other than the county. And, and so it's gonna be really important that some statistics get maintained to see whether or not that that really is the best route to go.
Well, my plan for at the end of those three years is that if the county would be willing to either pay for in its entirety or a percentage of that salary, that this position, this, this diversion program coordinator would also be coordinating adult offenses that I would refer. And so it wouldn't just be the juvenile side. So part of the cost savings to the county would be that some adult offenses are also being deferred. Because as this underage program, diversion program continues to grow, at some point there are going to be, there's gonna be enough work there for a full-time person. And as we continue to maybe expand it into other offenses being referred on the adult side, this diversion program coordinator could be monitoring both juvenile and adult diversions. And so from a cost-saving standpoint, that'd be more attractive for the county to have that increased responsibility.
Three years from now to look at though.
Well, right, so on that fourth year, so it'd be, you know, July 2024, that's something that, you know, we would, we'd look into as, as it would benefit the county more so than, than just the juveniles, so.
And then the other question I had for Dan, and I'm sorry, Mike, is, you know, at the township meeting, you gave the presentation on the open meeting laws, and I'm really sorry I had to leave early.
Yeah, you were headed to the meeting, I was supposed to go too as well.
I was at the, for the public affairs. I was at the Public Affairs Meeting. But what I wondered is, is it possible for somebody in your office, whether that's you or somebody else, to put together a checklist, because there was a lot of confusion from our, what came out of that is our township people really don't understand the open meetings law, okay? And I wondered if it's possible for you guys to put together some kind of checklist that they can use? That would be really helpful, I think.
Well, right, and I, I mentioned to Misty, just sending my PowerPoint out to all the townships, but if we can condense it down into a checklist, that's fine, too, because that was my concern, is after I presented all this information, it's like, well, I haven't been doing that for 30 years. What are you talking about? And so it, it was enlightening.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can put together the checklist.
That'd be great. Thank you.
What's that, Larry?
They're happy. I talked to four different townships yesterday.
They were happy with that information?
No.
Okay.
I said this is the guidelines that we go by, it has to be done, and I'm sorry, it's, if you have a township meeting, the township, people that live in that township should be able to be at the meeting.
Well, yeah, and I think.
And they need to know when the meetings are.
Right, part of the confusion was this definition of township business, right? Is, is some of this not a non-t township business, right? And this idea that we have to follow the same noticing as the county commission, I think there was a disconnect there, and they're both equally politically, you know, same subdivisions, so yes, but.
I think there was confusion about a public hearing, which is a couple of times a year where they do their annual meeting and their equalization boards, versus public just giving proper notice, for instance, of a commission meeting, and the publication requirements for each, so.
Right, and the fact that special meetings are considered the same as regular meetings.
Or regular meetings, and you have to create an agenda and post an agenda. You can't just call a special meeting at 2:00 and meet at 3:00, so. It just, yeah.
A checklist would be great.
A checklist. It would be amazing.
Well, right, and the flooding presents a unique set of challenges, because you have these issues that arise over a 48-hour period, and Ryan mentioned, and I agreed with him, is that that's fine to take action within that timeframe, but make sure that those actions that you took are reflected in your next public meeting, about what happened and why you did it, and then, so.
Hey, any other questions? All right, we're going to move on, thank you, Dan. We'll move on to the commissioner reports and discussion items. It did have some correspondence we received, it's noted. You can all take a look at those. We discussed the chamber one already. As far as commissioner reports are concerned, we're getting a little long in the tooth here. I intend to divert my report to the next meeting. Does anybody else want to do their report, or defer to the next meeting? Commissioner Pierce.
I would like to do my Public Affairs Report, but other than that. And the only reason for that is that tentatively, the Public Affairs Committee set the City School Board forums for March 28th at 9:00, if anybody wants that calendar, and that April 15th will be the post-legislative meeting with David Owen, and that'll be followed by a intergovernmental meeting. So if you want to get those two dates on your calendar.
What was the April date?
April 15th, tax day.
April 15th is the post-legislative luncheon and their intergovernmental meeting, following that?
Following that.
What does that intergovernmental meeting consist of?
So they used to have these quite often, or annually, as part of this post-legislative, maybe the pre-legislative, but they haven't had them for the last couple of years. So what it was is the different governmental entities in town, the city, the county, SDSU, I think are, the school board was represented, the chamber sort of was the kind of.
Congressional representatives.
Ran congressional representatives from our, from our, from Rounds and Thune, and they were there, so.
Just kind of an update of what everybody was doing.
And everybody just went around the room and gave updates, and then there was maybe some conversation on, you know, if there was something that you could assist each other with, or if you had specific questions for other entities, you could address those at that time, so.
I will happily defer mine until next time, because I'll go into some of the NACO staff, and I'm going to scan and upload all the documents, so that everybody can see what I brought back with me.
Okay, Larry?
I'll do mine quick. On February 18th, after commission meeting, I did not make the extension board, but I was updated. I elect, I believe they elected a new chair, Ron Parmley. They're working on budgets for the extension board. On the 21st of February, review candidates for the Outdoor Adventure Center. On the 24th, we had an Outdoor Adventure Center Advisory Board. It's, we're moving along with the part-time staff, and Stacy, I thank her for helping out there. It's going pretty smooth, I guess. And on the 27th, I attended the Brookings County Conservation District Board meeting. They combined it into two months into one, and it was quite lengthy and very informative. They had some people speaking with some different programs they're trying to move forward with in the surrounding counties. On the 4th, we had a weed meeting, weed and pest meeting. We actually took bids for our spraying for the summer season. And on the 5th, attended the county annual weed and pest board with, in conjunction with the towns and townships. And then on the 6th, conducted interviews for the Outdoor Adventure Center, so yeah.
Thank you. Our next items, the executive session, we do not need, so we'll go right to adjournments or move them to adjourned.
Second.
Most made second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, we are adjourned.